Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting on February 28th. We're meeting at Town Hall at 6 o'clock, calling the meeting to order. We'll be meeting with the Finance Committee a little bit later to go over some individual departments' budgets. But in the meantime, we have some regular business to take care of. So I'll start with announcements. The town of Hatfield, as we're all aware, is going to be having their 350th anniversary in 2020. In the meantime, there is a logo contest, and you can find out information about that logo in submitting an application with a logo design by going to www.hatfield350.com or go to the townofhatfield.org and click on the link "Hatfield's 350th Anniversary." So what they're doing is having a logo contest, which will be the logo throughout the celebration of the 350th birthday. Is there any other announcements? Ed, do you have any announcements? Cindy? Marlene, did you have anything from an announcement perspective? Okay. So we'll get right into the meeting. Is there anyone here for public forum this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we have the approval of the minutes from January 25th. There's actually two sets of minutes, right? Regular session and executive session. So why don't we take them separately, just to keep it clean? So I'll make a motion to accept the executive session minutes from January 25th, 2018. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I'll make a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from January 25th.
Second.
Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded. Is there anything under discussion?
Yes, just one word.
Okay.
Paragraph five, where it says complacent. I remember the word was complicit. Changes just the meaning of the sentence a little bit.
Paragraph five?
Paragraph five, yeah.
Which minutes are we in?
The regular.
January 25th.
Sorry, the executive.
The regular, I thought we just voted to approve the executive session.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we did it.
Okay. Oh, you did it back? Other than when she had them in the file?
Yep.
Okay, you did it. Okay, well, it'll stay complacent, but it meant complicit. Yeah, I thought you took them in order. Oh, okay. You know, it's wrapped up. You're just talking about a spelling error? No, different word. Just a different word. Okay. Yeah, I think it was used above in another one, too. It doesn't quite make sense. That's enough.
Yeah, I know what you mean, but yeah, I think it's...
It's fine.
Yeah.
It's fine. I just thought you went in order of one, two.
Yeah, I held it, and then I said they're different ones. So a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Minutes have been approved, posted business. We're going to review a section of the financial policy. A policy that we're going to review, ultimately, we'll review the entire policy, but we're doing it in sections. And then we'll vote ultimately, when we review the entire policy, we'll vote at that point to accept it as a whole. So, all right. So in here, basically, it talks about capital planning. Marlene had highlighted a few things. I know that the town accountant has reviewed this. This is also, this is the policy where we've had assistance from Department of Local Services, right?
Right.
So that, you know, so a lot of this is to improve what we already had and update what we already had on file.
I was just going to say, so they took, you know, what we had for a capital planning policy, reviewed that, and added their recommendations for additional policies.
Right.
My only question on page one, under the Part A, it says $25,000. That's a change, right? Because it was...
That is a change, isn't it? $5,000 right now?
Yes, okay.
So that's, again, that's something the board can discuss if they like to see it remain at $5,000 or increase it, or maybe change it to $10,000.
Does the, Marlene, do you happen to know if the current policy also has that sentence after the amount, as far as to extend five years or more of useful life?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So they really updated, then? So is this, so is the way you'd like, so this is our first stab at this overall policy. Is it yours, Marlene, and the board's thinking that we would sort of make note of that, of that particular question, if, in case we want to change it? Or is it something you're looking for us to change now? I mean, right now, you said it's five, correct?
The five years.
I'm sorry, the amount.
Or $5,000, yes. It's $5,000. So we can, you know, the board wants to have some discussion about it or circle back to that.
I thought 10 was sort of the, I thought $10,000 was the threshold or the bottom number for capital planning.
I would recommend 10.
Yeah.
That's what I thought it was, too, and 10.
Yeah. Or we can ask for clarification, why do they think it should rise so dramatically? If we just want to find that out.
To do that.
Maybe that's the thing to do, you know? Maybe there's a reason for it.
Okay.
I mean, it is a capital expenditure, so it's probably a larger cost items. That's what they're looking at, I would assume, you know? Starting at 25 grand, that's more of a larger expense for a capital project. So I mean, on one hand, it sort of makes sense raising it.
Right. Okay, maybe we could just get, excuse me, clarification as to why the recommendation or suggestion has increased it? Because that's a big jump, actually.
It is.
So if we could do that.
I will.
Okay, thanks.
I'll follow up with the one.
Yeah, and as I said, part of our team has already reviewed this, so...
Yet prior...
I didn't see, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, prior to tonight's discussion, you know, I have had discussions with the accountant and the treasurer collector in the past, and they did not have any questions regarding this.
Yeah. As I read through it, I see a lot of it is cleaning up the verbiage and the wording, not really making any sort of dramatic changes to the policy as it exists now, its updates and clarification, is how I was interpreting most of it. Did you have something, Cindy?
No, it's all excellent practices, I think. I did read through it, and I have a lot of questions, but they're not questions about changing it.
Yeah.
It's just questions like, is this working right now? You know, with the, you know, when we look through the percentages, you should have 5% in, you know, 3% to 5%. And I just want to know if that's where we are at, actually, at all? You know what I mean? So that's something to discuss with you, not changes to the document itself.
Okay.
I just want to know if we're falling into, these are great to have all these guidelines and everything, but are they really... It is, and are they reasonable? Are we here? Yes. Well, and I had mentioned to Lydia, because Lydia did have some questions and had contacted DOR, and I had suggested that we even have a discussion tomorrow at the Financial Management Meeting, and DOR reps will be here for that meeting. So we'll bring that up.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
All right, I'll just give you the couple of not to head out questions maybe you could ask. That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for the update, Marlene. So were there, in that particular section, other than some clarifications tomorrow?
No, just questions I had about where we stand with that.
Okay.
So Cindy will share those with me, and I will...
Yeah, well, we'll have the experts here tomorrow, so...
Absolutely.
Yep. Get them while they're here. Okay. Thank you.
So do you want to, there were two other sections in there as well?
Oh, yeah. I didn't have, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't have any other questions on the...
The debt management and financial reserves.
Right.
Okay.
I didn't. I don't know if Ed or Cindy did, I'm sorry.
No, I just had that one question on the...
The first part had most of the yellow, the highlights. Yeah, okay. And whatever you have questions...
Yeah, minor or procedural, are we falling in that 3% to 5% where we're supposed to be on different subjects?
All right. Was there something, Marlene, that you wanted to point out?
And I would just, I'd just like to add that some of the items that I highlighted are tasks that I don't believe are happening.
Right.
And it was really for the purpose of the accountant and the treasurer collector to have that discussion with them and to make sure that we're following through and doing those things.
Because then the question will be, if these get accepted, how do we go about ensuring that they're getting done?
Absolutely.
And, you know...
Yeah. The whole idea of having these is to execute those policies and follow through with them.
Right.
You know, we have these financial management team meetings frequently. Right now, we continue to have them weekly. So as far as I'm concerned, we should have these, it's sort of the town's bible with regards to financial management. So we should always be, you know, referring to these. Okay, are we doing this? It should be a check off.
Right.
A checklist, make sure we're following through. And, you know, finance and Board of Selectmen periodically can say, you know, have you done this? Are you doing this?
Benchmark, the checklist, whatever you want to call it, it's, you know...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So I, as I said, I will, I'll talk with our DOR reps tomorrow and get those questions, answers to the questions that they have and circle back. I'll also, you know, check with them on that $5,000 threshold, versus 25 versus the 5 that it currently is.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Well, because right now, from a true capital, capital project committee standpoint, it's anything $10,000 or over is what they use as a guideline for...
Is it 10, Ed? I thought it was...
I thought it was 10.
Five, well, maybe it is 10.
It's 10.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I think that's a good number, but...
Yeah. Yeah, that's what they've been using. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Topic number two is the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Letter of Agreement for, to approve and sign energy efficiency, public information, and education project. And it's a component of the Green Communities Energy Grant.
Right. And I had previously reported out that all the energy projects have been completed, with the exception of this education outreach portion of it. And I met with representatives from PVPC today, and actually, the copy of the letter and the chart in your packet, I updated that chart. There was a sheet in your place, at your seat there. They had, because the grant expires May 30th, and we have to submit out reports in June. So they updated that schedule. So they're getting started on it. And really, there's advertising, you know, just posting information on the town's website and posters regarding the projects that have been completed and the savings, the cost in savings with replacing out lights.
Right. What the gain is.
Right. We did a lot of weatherization projects, insulating the roof at the high school and weatherization at the fire station and the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
Questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Cindy.
Yeah, I was looking at this now. I have a question. Do we pay, we pay the PV Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to belong?
We pay an annual, the town pays an annual assessment, which is part of the budget.
Right.
The operating budget.
And they know they do the master plan and everything like that. We've had them do in the past. We did, I was on the mitigation plan, that kind of thing. But this being part of the Green Grant.
Green Communities Grant.
Right, I remember proving that. But this portion of it, you know, I saw the weatherization and everything else, it says for education, and I was kind of disappointed in it because it says the town will pay over $6,000.
Well, that's what was...
Is that part of the grant?
It's part of the grant. And that was approved.
So they're not paying cash? The, is that part of the grant? Is the grant paying for this, is what I'm asking?
It will. We appropriated the, we appropriated the funds at town meeting for the project, and then we submit the invoices.
It's a reimbursable.
They do a...
Yep.
Because I looked at the contract, and I was just kind of disappointed. I thought for over $6,000, you know, if you look through the whole contract, there's only three items for that money. It says education outreach, media release, posters and flyers, put something on the town website, and educational materials for schoolchildren, you know, one to the school. And it says estimate based on $85 an hour to do that. I just thought that was pretty outrageous to, you know, to hand out brochures and put something on the website. And maybe some materials for the classroom.
Are you looking at the last page?
I am.
Attachment A, okay. And the scope is there, okay.
And if you look right in the center, there's just the three lines, one, two, three, four.
Right. The administrative support, 10 hours, 79 hours for education outreach, and then travel and materials.
Because to put that in the schools, I think they probably cover that in science class, or they Google about, learning about solar power, et cetera. I just thought that was awful high, at $85 an hour for educational outreach and put something on our website. I know, it's kind of disappointing, I think.
Well, and this was part of the grant application as well. It was included in the grant application that was submitted last year.
But I would just hope we'd get a little bit more for $6,000, you know?
I think that, I hear what you're saying. I think part of the lump summing, though, is broken out down here, so I think it's a little bit more involved. The money's total the same or similar.
The task, the detail.
But, you know...
At $85 an hour, though, you know, to hand out brochure, I thought it was pretty high, but anyway.
Well, there's the design of the material.
Well, they're developing, they're designing, actually, I met with the designer today. He's designing the pamphlets and the posters.
Okay, that's a poster. Okay, I just, I don't know, I just figured that might be covered, being that we belong, you know, to the PVC, we pay a membership, but...
No, that was, that's separate. This is separate from the annual assessment.
Okay.
Ed, did you have any comment?
No, it's all part of the grant, so I don't know if you can take that money out of the grant, if they'll let you. I mean, it just...
No, I'm not saying take it out. I'm just saying, I would think for $6,000, it'd be a little bit more than a few...
I don't know what that includes. We could actually ask and say, you know, what does that, the 79 hours include? Does that include classroom instruction and all that stuff, so?
Yeah. And I don't believe there's any room for negotiation, because the grant stipulated that after the project is funded and approved, we can't make significant changes.
Yeah, but I just thought, you know, $85 an hour and that much money for that, I would hope they would do a little bit more than what's listed.
Well, I mean, you get contractors charging that much an hour for services, and because that $85 an hour might be rolled in with, you know, health benefits and all that stuff. So that's where, you know, every contractor has their costs. I mean, that's not unusual.
Yeah, it's still a lot.
I'm just saying, that's the way it is.
No, I hear you. I hear you.
The good news is it's reimbursable. So we're going to get the money back.
There you go.
Yeah. Okay, is there a motion? Or I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Hatfield and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for the Energy Efficiency Public Information and Education Campaign Project.
Wow, that's a mouthful, huh?
Yeah. Jeez, is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay. A motion's been made and seconded to enter into the agreement for this reimbursable grant. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll just abstain on that one, okay?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Marlene, item number three, I know that...
And Kyle is here, so you could ask him to come forward. But he's been pretty busy, and just wanted to update the board on the projects going on in town and...
So we're going to ask our building inspector, Kyle Scott, to give us an overview of what's been keeping him so busy these last few months. Good, how are you?
Good, good. Lot of new residential, so we're doing well on that. As ones come off, other ones drop off to a certificate of occupancy, so they're in the phase of having an open permit. So the list keeps changing, so I've been updating it with the assessors. Totally 11 now, I believe. Single families, eight. And the condos across the street, the former center school. Mixed, scattered industrial and commercial development, Helena Chemical, new addition. Fire chief went through. He got a great, great deal on compliance with all the fire protection on that. Made him bring it up to standards. A lot of it's being sprinkled, except where, you know, he had concerns of various chemicals, which it's best not to sprinkle those areas. Turf Care is proposing an addition. Steeble, as you know, Steeble Eltron over on West Street has got a few things going. Scapes Builders, I'm meeting with them tomorrow about their new facility, which would be on West Street. They bought a fairly good-sized piece of property. They're doing offices for themselves, small construction yard, and then also some rental office spaces in an office building. So that's up the street from where Steeble would be. And then, you know, various scattered additions, renovations. There's 324 permits out right now, still open. So a good deal for a town this size. It's actually a lot of activity. Plain Road, solar field, permit value, 106 Plain Road, that came in at $7,800,000, just for that one field. Across the street, the center school, $1,127,000. The average permit value on these houses that are, it's going in, I would say, is probably 350, 350 range to higher, certainly higher in some cases, as we know some of them.
Right.
You know, fairly large one proposed for Elm Street, which is in excess of 8,000 square feet. So that would be, break that rule, so.
It's great. You have been keeping busy, huh, Kyle?
Yeah, it's very good.
Yeah, no, it's great. And speaking of across the street, are things, you know...
Things are progressing, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen a lot of activity going on out there, and just things are moving.
It's doing well.
Great.
And on a whole, it's very positive for Hatfield. I see a lot of people that want to move to Hatfield. So if we could get some more development as far as new building lots and things, I think it would, you know, you would have a surge, because other communities, they're getting priced out.
Right.
So it's very, very difficult to find anything.
Great. Anybody have any particular questions of Kyle?
Just in a general one, just to learn, if somebody's going to be blasting for foundation, do they file with you or the fire department?
Fire department. And you normally do a pre-blasting survey, so if there's a structure near it, and then what's normal today is you would probably blanket the area when the blasting occurs. And that's my experience. And also, if it's in close proximity to anything, usually hook on seismic equipment nowadays. So it depends how extensive the rock is, but that's a blasting permit from the fire department. Steve?
Well, it sounds positive to more money coming to the tax rules, right?
I think it's a good thing, yeah. I'd like to see the commercial development expand along West Street. So we need that sewer line.
Yes, we do. Yeah. Marlene?
Kyle, on the first page, the houses that you list there, that's all new construction?
It's all brand new.
That's surprising. Is that unusual for Hatfield, or is it an increase in what we've seen over the past...
Well, we had the condos, of course, which surged our numbers when the different condo depart, that's, I would say that's pretty unusual for a town of this size to have.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
To have that many at one time. I do Deerfield, as you know, I've done Williamsburg and Northampton. Northampton, of course, that's small potatoes, but in Williamsburg, that would be unusual. And Deerfield, there's nothing of that size right now, except for the new Sugarloaf condos that are going in. You know, there's 79 permitted condos, or going to be permitted condos, but to have single, actual standalone, single family, that's a lot for this population. So it's all encouraging.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
On a lighter note, I need some office space when this renovation's going on. And I was thinking of approaching the Veterans Agent about maybe sharing some space, if that might work out with the board.
I think those departments that are going to be living through the construction just need to have conversations with them.
Yeah, Kyle and I were talking earlier today.
I just wanted to run it by you.
Figure something out, yeah. Thank you for that.
I think it would be low-profile, and it would work all right in that office. All right?
Sure.
Any questions for me?
All set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, got a few minutes before we kick into our, excuse me, our friends from finance. So under old business, we have made the appointment of a treasurer, collector appointment upon the resignation of Laura Lee Bertram, which was effective two weeks...
February 16.
February 16, two weeks ago, on Friday. Excuse me. So what we'll have happening right now is to fill that void. We have Bay State Municipal Accounting will be assisting both in the treasurer and collector's roles, as well as we've got Sharon, who's in that role already as a town employee. And they will also continue to assist the accountant as we're moving forward with this. But we had taken some votes at previous meetings because we were unaware of the appointments and how long those appointments would actually be in effect for. We've gotten all the clarification we need, right, Lydia? And from town councils and election officials and all of that. So for topic four, is it just a matter, you want these red, like this, Marlene? Is that kind of the deal? I'll give, I'll just read this, and we'll go right into the motion.
You may.
All right. So at the February 13th meeting of the Board of Selectmen, a vote was taken to notify the town clerk to post the vacancies created by the resignation of treasurer, collector on the annual town election in May of this year, this coming May. However, with the recent legal opinion from town council regarding appointment to fill the vacancies of both the treasurer and the town collector for the remaining balance of the term, the following motion is recommended to rescind the board's February 13th, 2018 vote. I move the Board of Selectmen to rescind the vote taken at our February 13th, 2018 meeting to put the remaining term for the town of Hatfield treasurer and town of Hatfield collector on the town's annual May 2018 ballot. So is that going to be separate from, I see this, or do you want this wrapped into that same?
No, that's a separate motion.
That's separate, okay. So motions have been made, is there a second?
To rescind, right, second.
So this is to rescind the vote taken on February 13th, to have the treasurer and collectors' positions on the ballot in May of 2018 to fulfill the remaining two years that would have been part of that term. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, for your consideration to amend the board, to amend the board's vote taken at its February 26th, 2018 meeting to appoint Edwina Palmizzano treasurer and town collector until the position is filled. In light of the town council's opinion that in accordance with Chapter 41, Section 40, the appointment can be for the remaining term, I suggest the following motion. I move to amend the Board of Selectmen's February 2016, 2018 vote to appoint Edwina Palmizzano treasurer and town collector for the balance of the term expiring May 19th, 2020. Motion's been made, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. So under discussion, what we, what all this is boiling down to is, you know, the Board of Selectmen has the option of, when making an appointment to fill the remaining term of the accountant, the town collector, the town treasurer, or the auditor, if we had one, the board can make that appointment to fulfill the remaining term that those people held. It doesn't have to be until the next election. And so that's what we have chosen as a board to do, until the term expires in 2020. So for anyone who's watching on TV and not quite sure what's going on here, that's ultimately what we've done. We've asked that while we have Bay State Municipal Accounting coming in to assist us in the collector and treasurer's role, along with Sharon, we needed to have two people be basically on our financial accounts. And so we appointed, and we got permission to do this from Edwina. We appointed Edwina to be the, Edwina Palmizzano to be the town treasurer and the town collector so that we could have a second person's name on the council. And Edwina will be assisting in that office, but I don't know what the right way to say. It's more of a, kind of a figurehead position, is that, you know? Because Bay State's really going to be assisting, while Edwina will as well. So again, gets a little confusing, but I'm trying to explain it the best I can. So the motion's made, seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Great. Thank you. All right. So, this is going to take two seconds, and then we've got, we'll ask our friend, we'll take a two-second, two-minute break. So there's a motion to, so, so did somebody leave the, that it matters?
No, you're referring to Anna Holhut.
Yeah, sorry.
Appointment of Anna Holhut. Actually, you know, she has been attending those meetings.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Initially, she had expressed interest in being on a subcommittee.
Okay.
And I was informed that she has been attending the steering committee's meetings all along.
Okay.
And Ed Lesko, I think, had, had made a request.
All right.
Yeah, I think we voted on this in the fall already.
Well, I researched the minutes and didn't find it.
That name wasn't on there? All right.
I didn't see it in there either.
Okay. So what, what we've been asked to do is just make it official. I will make a motion to appoint Anna Holhut to the Hatfield 350th Anniversary Steering Committee.
I'll second it.
And again, Anna's been doing all this all along anyways, but we're just, I guess we're making it official. So. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thanks. So that pretty much ends the regular portion of the selectmen meeting. We'll ask John to cut the camera for a couple of minutes, and we'll get the finance committee up here as we begin to go through various departments' budget requests. Thank you. All right. Thank you, John. Before we begin our meeting with the finance committee, which will be a working session for the various budgets, and nothing will be approved tonight. We're just going to review submissions. We'd like to just make an announcement about the tax bills. And so Sharon from the treasurer, town collectors' office, just wanted to say a few words.
So just wanted to give you guys the update that the bills are going to be printed throughout the end of this week, and so they'll be in the mail for next week. Third and fourth quarter bills will be in the same envelope, and they will both be due May 1st. So the legislation we had hoped for hadn't come through, so we don't want to wait any longer. We want to get the bills in the taxpayer's hands. So you can expect them in your mail next week. And if there's questions, obviously, call us, come see us, and we'll start that next process. So May 4th will be the due date for both quarters.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon.
Yeah, Sharon, thanks for the update. And just to remind people, if you haven't done so already, because I'll have to come in tomorrow and see you, the excise tax bills are coming due in the next week or so for...
March 5th.
Motor vehicles, so.
Come see me.
Going to be a good week next week.
Yeah, you're going to get a lot of friendly phone calls.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Thanks, John.